December 3rd, 2019. We have a quorum. This is the City of Austin Councilwork Session. We're in the Boards and Commission Room here at City Hall. It is 9:15. Colleagues, I would suggest that we begin with the briefing on homelessness. Again, we'll do that at the beginning of all of our work sessions in indefinite period of time. And then we will go to polled items. At the end of polled items, the next thing we would do would be the Land Development Code discussion. And that will begin with the staff presentation. They said they needed about an hour to go through the topics. And then I would follow, unless there's objection or changes to kind of the outline that I put on the message board yesterday. So, let's begin. Yes, Councilor M. Pool?
I noticed that a number of topics that a number of us around the dice had requested are missing from the list. So, I think we intend to bring them up, but I wanted to make note that that was a concern that they were missing.
Okay. I talked to Ann about that yesterday briefly, and I think that the ones that you mentioned were actually in the list, covered by that, or intended to be covered by that. Maybe the descriptors are not broad enough. The Planning Commission, what we did is we just took the topics, really, that came from the Planning Commission, and they had suggestions on the whole breadth of this. So, the intent was to have areas that were covered by all of them. For example, appeals and kinds of things were covered by them in process. So, we would do the same thing, but certainly the goal is not to stop anybody from bringing up any topic that they want.
Of course, we would bring up the items that we want to talk about. We're not limited to what is in the list.
Correct.
And I appreciate your explanation, but the fact is that, absent the listing of the intent, there wasn't any way for anybody to know. And we had taken the trouble to give you a list, a specific list of six additional topics that we expected to see on the list. So, I just point that out.
No, no, no. And the intent was to have it. So, if you tell me the six areas, remind me what the six areas were, I'll tell you where I think they are in that list, because it was intended to be all-inclusive. And if you do that, I'd be happy to identify where I think that they most appropriately would come up in that list.
We listed them in one of the message board posts right previous to the list that you issued, and also read them out at the last work session.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, before we move into it, I will tell you where I think those are already covered on the list.
And to that point, I do want to raise that when that list was brought up during work session, I think we all, I think we discussed and people generally assented to, we had a back-and-forth about fitting those topics in under the broader topics. So, I don't think that it's a, to me, seeing it, it's not a surprise based on the conversation that we all had, which we don't want to miss topics, but we did want to sort them.
Okay. All right. With that said, we'll go ahead and proceed. Let's bring up the folks to give us an update on homelessness.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Rodney Gonzalez, Assistant City Manager. With me today is Matt Malika, Executive Director for the Ending Community Homeless Coalition in Austin. We're going to talk to you about, of course, the most recent homeless initiative, which we had described in the October 29th briefing, as well as a couple of memos that have been sent to council regarding a proposal that Echo has offered to partner with the city to convert motel properties into low-barrier bridge housing units. So, we're going to go over the Echo proposal. This was outlined in a November 26 memo to Mayor and Council, as well as the process for selecting hotels or motels. Following that, we have Susan McDowell, the Executive Director for LifeWorks, who's here to talk about the campaign to end youth homelessness, as well as some data on youth experiencing homelessness. Susan is going to go over a grant-funded opportunity for the youth homelessness demonstration program, and then as well as the targeted sort of outreach effort. So, the proposal to convert motels into low-barrier bridge housing. The city role in this partnership would be to provide the capital investment to purchase motel properties. Echo has offered a letter of support to endorse the purchase of anywhere from 200 to 300 motel units. In return, what we would do is we would do a long-term, below-market-rate lease or services agreement to Echo, so that they can do a comprehensive management of those motel conversions and provide onsite services. Echo's role in this partnership is that they would secure private investments to fund those operations on an ongoing basis, including the maintenance and the provision of onsite Within the November 26 memo to council, we had described the process for selecting motels. It is a collaborative process between Echo and city staff, which includes the Office of Real Estate Services, Homeless Services Office, as well as our Health Department as well. There are a variety of screening factors that we use. First and foremost, we need to ensure that these motel properties are both physically and economically feasible to convert to bridge housing units. We look at the building condition, and when I say we look at it, Matt Malika will actually do an onsite inspection, as well as our Office of Real Estate, to go and see just the condition that these buildings are in, what type of work, if any, is needed to keep the motels operating. They'll take a look at the building configuration. In particular, are the motel units facing inward? Are they facing outward? Are there some onsite amenities, such as laundry room facilities, conference rooms, et cetera? Because again, what we want to do with these motel conversions is provide onsite services, and so it helps us to have the space for those services to be provided. Looking at the unit configuration for each of these motel units, because as Matt has indicated to us, and we agree, eventually, we do want to turn these into permanent supportive housing units. And so, it's important for us to see whether or not these units can have a kitchenette installed in them, so that way they can become a PSH unit. We look at the number of rooms. We want to make sure that there's an adequate number of rooms, so that way we can have a good agglomeration of services provided onsite. With regard to unit configuration, we're looking at the plumbing and utilities, just to see how easy it is to configure these rooms into permanent supportive housing. Key to this also is the location of each of these motels. We certainly do not want an agglomeration of these motels in any one part of town. We're looking throughout the entire city at motels for opportunities, and our Office of Real Estate Services is doing a very good scan across the city to try to locate motel properties that would fit within this effort. We also look at, of course, the acquisition and renovation costs, which were very important to us. We're looking for a good price on a motel, one that is reasonable, one that we feel we can accommodate, and that is going to be, of course, low in terms of renovation costs. And as was brought up before, sometimes some of these motels do have individuals who stay there for an extended stay. And so, we look at, you know, what that is, and, you know, what kind of relocation support might be needed in those instances. When Echo does look at these motels with us, they will either endorse or not endorse a motel, but when they endorse it, they have committed to fundraise for those motels for the ongoing maintenance and operation of those. And that was really quickly the presentation that we wanted to talk to council about, because we know it's a good discussion topic. It is new to Austin, the use of motels for bridge housing. The conversion of motels to units is not new, though. We had provided council with four examples of how that's been done, namely through foundation communities, but it's our intention to partner with Echo, and they've stepped up in a very big way with a commitment to fundraise for the operations and maintenance of these motels. And before we turn over to questions, I certainly want to give Matt the opportunity to expand more on the proposal.
Yeah, thanks Rodney. Matt Malika, Executive Director, Ending Community Homelessness Coalition. Thanks again for the opportunity to be here. So, just, you know, Rodney set out an outline, sort of, how Echo is partnering with the city to locate and determine suitability for these, the motels. I think it's really important that we're looking at not only short-term, feeling a short-term need for folks, getting people immediately off the street who are experiencing homelessness, but also how we're planning, ongoing, to turn those units into permanent supportive housing, and then continue to find and locate suitable motels throughout the city, that we can, we can sort of do this more consistently and create a mechanism for, for bringing these types of, this type of PSH into our community, that's a little more methodical, and that we can sort of do more easily and without having to reinvent the wheel over and over again. So, the first one, I think, is, you know, we looked at with the roadway. We're looking at how, you know, working with our community partners, bringing everyone to the table to talk about referral sources, you know, to talk about how support services are going to be structured there, how primary care is going to be, you know, and healthcare services will be structured, how the operations will go. But once we have that blueprint set in place, which I think, you know, we'll obviously have in time for the roadway, we'll be able to replicate that, I think, pretty easily over and over again. It's something that, through economies of scale, we'll also, we'll start to decrease some of our costs associated with the operations, and, you know, something I think we can, we can replicate pretty quickly. So, I just wanted to mention that, and I'll leave it open for questions.
Questions about strategy? Councilor P. O.
Yes. Matt, thank you for your report and your eagerness to help us out in our homeless situations. I just wanted to know if, once you do get to the point where you have all your, you have the building possession, you're already getting ready, if you would be willing to offer a tour of the facility before we get the clients in there, to the neighborhood, so they'll be able to see what's there and what's available?
Yeah, of course. I think, you know, certainly the neighborhood outreach is a really key component to this, to educate folks in the community about what types of services will be onsite. And to your point, I think one of the things that we want to really emphasize is that the services, you know, certainly from a healthcare perspective and from a support services perspective, should be there to stand up the neighborhoods, not just for folks experiencing, you know, using those units as bridge housing. If we have primary care clinics set up, you know, healthcare clinics set up onsite, you know, the expectation is that we'll have walk-in hours for people, that they can come throughout the community if they don't have access to those services. If we have a food bank set up, you know, that the idea is that people can access those services and those resources in the community, we'll make sure to include that in the design we have.
Well, that's, that's great, because, you know, there's been a lot of questions about that. Was our, the city council getting into the motel, buying the, around neighborhoods? And I know their concerns, you know. I worked a lot with homeless population over the years, and I just found out that they're just about the nicest people that you can be around. So, I just want to dispel the rumors that, oh, we're getting the kind of people that the governor described, which I haven't seen them, but, you know, they're, you know, they're actually human beings, you know. We have to oppose that, with that attitude, that there are human beings that, you know, just need a little bit of help to get them off the street.
Mayor Pro Tem. How's it?
I want to say I'm very grateful for the work that's being done and the creative ways we are trying to figure out how to face this incredible challenge that we face. But I just want to speak about the process a little bit. I appreciate the memo that pointed out that there have been previous memos talking about this, but we have never, as a council, really discussed this or endorsed it. Not to say that we wouldn't have, but there was significant discussion, and since the approval of the one that was in South Austin, that we decided not to do. And when I say "we," I don't know who the "we" is, because that was a vote by this council to do that, and then we were told, well, we're not going to do that after all, which is fine. If, if, and we have said several times, we want to defer to staff and their expertise, and if you believe that that is not the direction to go, that's fine. But I just want to point out, saying that there's a memo that we've talked about, we've been talking about this, does not also say that we've all said that this is the right direction that we should be going in. That being said, I am fine with this direction. I am concerned, just like we don't want, we believe that affordable housing should be in all parts of our city, the same goes for these types of facilities as well. And from my understanding of where the next ones will possibly go, they will go in the majority-minority districts of our city. And so, if the fact, I understand the factors being, it has to be the right price, it has to be the right area, and all that stuff, but all those factors point to them in certain parts of our city, and I have concerns about that, because there's concentration of poverty concerns. Just like affordable housing, there's evidence that shows when people live amongst different income levels, it helps them thrive and become better and try to, and try, just to be better. So, I just want to point that out. My concerns with the process, my concerns with us equitably placing these in all parts of town, and making sure that, because if we continue, there was a beautiful editorial, I think, last weekend, about, these are people, they're people with all kinds of issues, and some of the negative discussion is, in fact, I remember when we first started talking about this, I said, I hope this doesn't turn into those people. So, I want to be clear. It's not about that. These are people who need help, and all over our city needs to, needs to understand that and accept it, and accept these places that will help them become better. So, I hope, as we continue these searches for, for these needed facilities, we sincerely do look throughout the city, because I will have big concerns if every single one of these is going to be in the majority-minority parts of our town.
So, I just want to, real quickly, endorse some of the points that the Mayor Pro Tem raised. One, I mean, I'll begin with, I am also appreciative that staff's moving forward with strategy. This is obviously an issue which has dominated, in so many ways, conversations in the city since June, but it's real clear, we didn't create new populations of people experiencing homelessness, it's we made it more visible. But at that time, what this council talked about was the importance of not hiding homelessness, but housing people. And I'm happy that you've moved toward a strategy that represents 40% lower cost than what we had potentially been looking at on Ben White. So, I think that that part's good, because what we want to do is get to a certain, certain volume, a certain number, and from reading from the service providers, it sounds like, you know, 300 more or less is kind of the capacity within our system, and I think we should try to hit that as quickly as we can. You know, the different people are trying to do different things in the community, and that's good. We have the ones that have historically been doing this, Community First, Caritas, all have incredible success records, front steps with our arch incredible success records. We need to build on that. But we also need to provide more sticks and brick locations if we're going to do a housing first strategy that actually stabilizes people. We know that the success rate, if we're able to do that, is like 90%. So, we need to build on those successes. So, I like the strategy that you're pursuing as well. But I think that you have to be doing a better job of communicating with the council on this. And, you know, I know that this involves real estate matters, and it's tricky, and from what I've heard, you're trying not to put the cart before the horse, as you talk about individual properties and that kind of stuff, but I would urge you to, you might, you can't nail everything on a property and then bring it to the council. You have to start going to the council and then make the council part of that conversation to at least know what it is that's happening, even as you're beginning to negotiate, even as you're beginning to talk, so that people are more in the loop on this as it's going forward. And we've put this on the agenda for executive session on Thursday, and I think that, as long as you're in this process, that's something that has to happen, and you have to provide a lot more. I also want to concur that we have to locate these in districts other than districts one through four as well. And I recognize that there's a, potentially, a premium cost associated with putting it in districts other than districts one through four, but I, but that's true for affordable housing. You know, if we were trying to put all the affordable housing just in the areas where it costs the least, then we, that's not the strategy we use in affordable housing either, and it can't be our strategy here, and I know it's not, and I know maybe it's harder to find properties. We can talk about that in the executive session, but we have to find, and for what is good for the city and good for this effort and project, the ability to be able to locate this property is also outside of the city. I want to thank Echo and your board for stepping up in a really big way to help with fundraising in order to be able to operate these locations. My hope is, is that as we move toward a strategy that's actually getting to a critical mass of rooms, that we'll be able to take this and fundraise philanthropically and with foundations and others within the community to get more people to participate on this. You know, we have a strategy that the chamber's launched right now, to do 300 rooms in a sprung tent structure. And I know that part of the reason they wanted to do that is they wanted to get 300 rooms on the ground, and they saw that as being the fastest way to accomplish that. And quite frankly, looking at the city's track record and how long it takes us to get these to happen, I understand that. But if there's a competing strategy that can work that fast, but also provide a permanent solution rather than a temporary solution, then I want us to demonstrate that and move for that, so that we can perhaps work more closely with the DA and the chamber on solutions that meet mutual kinds of goals and working together. And at a time when we have the governor coming in, responding to what he perceives to be his constituents' requests, again, wanting to do something actively and quickly, I, you know, you read the newspaper, it almost sounds like, in some ways, that the governor's the only one out here doing stuff. And we'll, at the end of this presentation, I'm sure we'll talk about the update on homelessness and the other areas that we have, because I want to get to that in a second as well. But we are doing a lot, and this is a housing strategy that actually gets people off the streets, but gets people off the streets permanently, enables them to stabilize their lives, rotate people through these rooms, brick and mortar rooms, and that you're developing. So, I think it's a really good direction. I'm happy you're doing this. I'm happy you're doing it in a way that reflects the urgency that this council has asked you to address. You have to do a better job of bringing this body along with you, and we have to locate some of these in districts five through 10. Kathy? Did you turn off your light?
I did, just because it was a while and I was coughing. Thanks very much for the presentation, and I have some of the same questions and requests that I had when we talked about this the last time. But I just want to mention, I noticed, manager, I'd asked you yesterday if we were about to be asked to approve another one this week. You said not this week. However, then we got a memo later in the day indicating that we may be making a decision about a purchase next week for an additional hotel-motel. And, you know, I, I am also very interested in this model. I have to point out, though, that it is, it is happening very quickly. It's not at all clear to me what the funding strategy is for funding operations and maintenance, renovations. I did ask, when we approved this purchase last time, I said, I think it's a great idea. I'm on board. Before we continue with this strategy, I'd like to see a business plan, a real plan, for how, how these funds are going to be raised to make these successful, because otherwise we have several pieces of real estate that are standing vacant, and we already have several standing vacant that could be better utilized at the moment. So, if you could help me understand, I'm looking at the memo, and it talks about, it talks, the funding strategy that's indicated in the memo really deals just with the capital cost of acquisition, the certificate of obligation and CDBG dollars. In our last conversation, we talked about the fact that Echo has committed to raising funds for operations and maintenance, which is terrific. I don't know whether you have a report on how that fundraising is going, but if we're adding another potential hotel within the next couple of weeks, that would double the fundraising costs, and I haven't received yet, and I don't know if my colleagues have seen anything. What are the, what are the costs, the anticipated costs of each of these items, operating and maintenance of basic operations and maintenance, until you're able to bring in funding that would track with individuals? I think you said that was a year or so off. The renovation costs, the plan for converting them, and whether it makes sense to, and we mentioned this, I think some of this was a conversation in executive session, but as you're looking at hotels and motels, some have kitchenettes. It would seem to me that, as you're looking, it would be, we need to have a cost-benefit analysis of whether it makes sense to buy them already having kitchenettes, so that, so that there's not a need in a year or two to have people vacate the space, renovate them, or do an ongoing, you know, I don't know what the plan is for renovating those into permanent units. And then I guess, lastly, and then I have some other comments about the operations, and again, I would like to know, since this is really a new area for Echo, I guess I really want a better understanding, maybe not in this session, but somewhere of what the plan is, what the plan would be for hiring and training staff to run a facility of this sort, which is, which is a specialized kind of place. So, if we could talk about the funding piece, and again, manager, I just want to say, I was pretty clear, both in this session and in the last session, that we needed, that funding piece is really critical, and I'm not, I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing real solid financial information here that would help assure everyone that we're proceeding knowing exactly where those funds are going to be coming from.
Sure. So, you know, I think, you know, in terms of where the funds will be coming from, I think it's going to be a combination of foundations, philanthropic commitments, and, you know, like individual giving. I think that's what we're headed towards, and we're looking at raising about $1 million per year per hotel. About $300,000 to $400,000 of that will go towards operating the hotel, and about $600,000 to $700,000 of that would go towards the supportive services needed in the hotel. And I think, you know, one of the things, we have, I have performance done on cost per room. I think that changes with the scale, and I think that's important. So, in, operating an 87-unit hotel, there's a different cost associated and a different operating structure associated than if you had 300 units and you had maintenance that was going to all 300 units, as opposed to, you probably wouldn't hire a maintenance crew and hire people to clean the rooms, or do, you know, far as the operating goes, for just one hotel, we would probably farm that out to some other company that does that work to come in and do that. So, the cost structure is a lot different per, based on the scale. So, as we scale up, if we looked at just what we had in the queue, the 87 units of the roadway in, I can provide an operating cost analysis for those, just those 87 units, but that will likely change significantly and be impacted significantly when we bring economies of scale into play with more hotels.
Okay. So, could we get, could we, could you share that information with us? I mean, I think I captured what you said. About $1 million would be necessary per year per hotel. $300,000 would be the operating, the annual operating costs. $600,000 to $700,000 would be supportive services. How about the renovation costs?
Sure. So, there won't be any, I mean, my understanding is with these, you know, we're going through the due diligence period now, but there isn't an immediate renovation need for these, we're not raising to renovate immediately. We will be moving people in to the units as-is, and if later down the line, there needs to be renovations done to be able to use housing vouchers there for permanent supportive housing, the cost to put in a sink, generally speaking, on a 100-unit hotel, a little kitchenette sink in those spaces, I've heard, received quotes, heard quotes, anywhere between $300 and $400 a hotel unit.
Can I, and I guess, you know, and again, this may not be the right setting for this conversation, but I would like to have a better sense of what those who provided estimates, were they done in this market, were they done in other markets? And if, and if our intent is not to renovate them to be permanent supportive housing units, I guess, I mean, is that the intent or not?
Yeah, I mean, down the line, that's the intent.
Then I think we need to estimate what that cost is, with real, solid numbers and a solid timeframe for when that would happen, and anyway, again, I'm enthused. Again, I'm, I'm enthused about the idea. I just, we really need a level of information beyond what we, what we currently have. And I guess I would like to know a little bit more about your fundraising timeline, and, you know, as we go into this partnership, I think it's absolutely critical that we understand what that fundraising timeline is, and that we understand, city manager, that you have a plan for what, what is our Plan B? If the fundraising is not, I, I intend to do everything I can to help support your fundraising, as, as I have with other fundraising efforts in this, in this arena, I think this is a critical need, and everybody who's able to should contribute. What, but what are our, what are your plans for identifying funds? What is the identi, what, what pool of funds have you identified if the fundraising doesn't progress at the needed rate? Are we going to wait, you know, for that, those funds to be raised? Or is there a plan to bring in city funding, and if so, where is that coming from, and what are the, would, can you assure us that there would be no other services displaced in the meantime?
Okay. Ann?
I just want to say thank you all very much for proceeding, really, you know, taking to heart our concerns and the need for moving forward quickly, so I appreciate that. I, I share what everyone has said so far, and I want to thank the mayor, Portem, for, for remind, continuing to remind us that we need to have a process for how we're going to locate in the rest, you know, throughout the city. Because as she mentioned, you know, just looking at this criteria is going to cause some difficulties with locating places throughout the city. So maybe, I would suggest some kind of process for either sitting down with each of us individually or as a group, that maybe we can help, but think about places in our respective districts, that that might be helpful. I don't want to slow down what you're doing, but I do think that listing the criteria here is very helpful to us, as we can all kind of think about what's in our, in our districts. But maybe there's some kind, some way you can work with us individually or with groups of us that we can help brainstorm on places. Because I think it, I think, I, I think it's really critical, and I want to thank everyone who's, who's mentioned that. So, you know, with the South Austin Housing Center, we, we ended up, you know, we ended up finding a quicker and less costly location for this, for South Austin Center, but we still need to, to really look closely at District Five. And I know there'll be places in District Five that we can, that we can find, and so I just want to offer to work with you on that.
Jimmy?
So I, I'm really impressed with what's finally coming to us. I know we were all hoping this would have come sooner, but I'm really excited about it. And I know, Matt, you have experience doing this in other cities prior to coming to Echo, so I'm, I'm pretty confident this is, this is going to go well, as it's gone well for you in the past. I'm, I'm a little concerned about what type of process we might invent, right? I'm not a commercial real estate broker, so I don't know that I'm going to be the right person to consult with about properties in Northwest Austin. And I'm, I'm a little curious about what market factors are at play in areas where maybe the transaction needs to happen faster, because that's how the market is moving in higher opportunity areas. And so we need a process that allows you all to move quicker and, and get properties purchased before another buyer swoops in and, and takes it away. I would love to, to have that kind of a thought process, too. And if we were able to, as a council, acknowledge that, that the third or the fourth or the fifth one needs to be in higher opportunity areas, then we should be able to define what higher opportunity is, and define a budget and an expectation, and then let you all go do it. And not, not get stuck in this place where, well, they, they found a property in my district on, on December 18th, but because the meeting schedule means you can't come back to council until late January, we lose the opportunity. I would hate to see that happen, too. So I'm curious about that type of a process. So there's really kind of two, there's a real council-involved process, and then there's kind of we set a policy and let them implement, which I'm more interested in, because I think that's maybe what the market forces are going to require. The, the Plan B question is an interesting one. I think we're all concerned about, about fundraising, and, and the mayor's brought up the fundraising that the chamber and the DAA are doing, and I think if we're working in partnership with them, we might find that 300 rooms in hotels is a much better outcome than in a sprung shelter where, where, you know, I don't know that they've located a, a site for that yet either, but I think there are more partners to come to the table. I will note that when we funded the Salvation Army Rathgaber Center, there did not, there was not a question about what the Salvation Army's Plan B was. They went out and raised money for capital and then came to the city hat in hand, and we didn't have a hand or a role in the development of that shelter. We didn't decide how many rooms there were going to be. We didn't help pick the location. We didn't, but, but when they came to us for the funding, we, we gave it. In this case, we are participating in the design of these shelters. We are participating in these decisions, and I'm much more comfortable being the Plan B, because we are developing the plan. I was not comfortable with the Salvation Army, because I don't know that if we had been involved during the capital planning, we might have added 100 more rooms. We might have asked for other types of services. We might have put, put a clinic on site. We might have done other things. So I'm much more interested in this process with Echo, and, and I would be curious to see a process that allows you all to move quicker, especially in higher opportunity areas.
Okay. Craig, we'll work right around.
I, I also appreciate the, the way that we're working on this quickly and with, and with urgency while also trying to make sure that we're deliberate and bringing everybody on, bringing everybody in. So I'd like to echo the points of my colleagues on that. And the reason that there is some level of urgency is we, this is a, a strategy that is, that is faster and brings people indoors and gets people the services they need more quickly, because we don't have to renovate or retrofit an entire building. And so I think that that's a big positive. I also think, take Matt's point to heart, that if we get multiple of these online, that that actually brings the cost of the entire system down. And so I do think, you know, getting to, to more hotels makes sense. I, I want to echo folks' points that if it's, if these are only in districts one through four, that doesn't seem, I don't think that aligns generally with the direction that this council, I think amongst all of us, regardless of which district we represent, I think we all have a value of wanting to make sure that there's affordable housing options in all parts of the city. At the same time, I do think that, you know, place, places on the east side in districts one through four are really welcoming places, and, and I think each of our colleagues in one through four also are trying to find places and work to, to make sure that this works in our districts, too. As evidence of that, I think if you did a, a map of, of housing choice vouchers and folks experiencing homelessness, having vouchers to live in a district, you'd probably overwhelmingly find the district one through four are the, are the places that are already really accepting and, and finding places. And so I think we just have to live with both of those, understanding that each of us wants to make this work in our districts, and it certainly doesn't mean we don't want them in one through four, but that, that frankly, we also have a value of making sure that this is all over the city, while also having the imperative of, of, of working quickly and deliberatively, because we know that this is a strategy that get, gets folks indoors quickly and, and hopefully permanently, just by adding a sink.
Natasha?
So, yeah, I'll echo the sentiment of most of my colleagues at this point and say thank you all for all your hard work. And Matt, I don't think this is for you so much as it is Rodney. Something that occurred to me recently, we had the opportunity to visit an established shelter. It's been in the neighborhood. I literally passed by the shelter for decades. I had no idea it was there. And so just to echo Councilmember Renteria's sentiment around how seamlessly we can be neighbors with all types of people in every part of town, I wanted to echo that. But I also wanted to say, this organization is underutilized because they're understaffed. So as we're moving forward and sort of calibrating expenditures, I think it's important that we make certain that existing organizations are already funded. So if we, you know, as we approach, you know, having this additional measure of support for our neighbors experiencing homelessness, I think we need to go through and make certain that the resources that already exist are fully funded, fully staffed, and we're maximizing their sort of proven success. And so that's something I wanted to point out. And then I also wanted to point out, some of my colleagues have spoken to it already, around funding, if it's confusing for us, it's really confusing for the general pop, public. So I think we just need to be very, very clear and very, very transparent about expenditures of funds. We need to make certain that everybody's on board and fully understands how we've made the decisions around spending. And thank you.
Kathy?
Just a, a quick note. I appreciate all the comments. I've corrected this characterization at least once before, possibly twice, but I'm going to do it again. To be very clear, the Salvation Army did not come to us hat in hand requesting money. We were in a conversation, I was talking with the Salvation Army about the waitlist that they have in their downtown shelter, which is in District Nine in addition to the arch. As we know, both of those shelters are at capacity. And in asking them about the women and children's shelter that is out on what was formerly county-owned land next to our city-owned shelter, they indicated that they were going to phase in, when we were talking about the capacity and how that would alleviate the capacity, the waiting list downtown, they indicated their phasing plan, because they hadn't yet received, done enough, they hadn't yet raised all of the operating funds. So I, I just want to continue to correct that, that they, they did not approach the city and ask that we put an item on the agenda for maintenance and operations. But when I heard of that need, it seemed to me in perfect alignment with what, with the conversations we've been having about the absolute need for more emergency shelter beds, and the need to get people who are currently experiencing homelessness and sleeping on our streets into a shelter. Here was a brand-new shelter that was not operating at 100% capacity. And so, you know, I think it's very important to characterize that accurately.
Okay. Mayor?
I'd appreciate Councilmember Harper-Madison for bringing up the points on how to make sure that we are utilizing service providers in an, in an efficient way and looking at the resources that might be needed. I'll just note that we put an item on the addendum as 116 to look at an outside contractor to make sure that we are looking at all of our contracts with homelessness service providers to do exactly that. So appreciate your support in that, and we look forward to seeing those results as well.
Okay. I just want to conclude this conversation again by thanking those service providers, because I know they've been involved in conversations with, with, with you, as you've indicated, and with the deputy city manager. I want to thank everybody out there. I want to thank their boards. I want to thank their, their, their benefactors and contributors, because this really is going to take the entire community. And, and I would make this appeal to the larger community. There is a vehicle with this that is now being developed and implemented to, to take people off our streets and put them into situations where they can stabilize their lives. And, and I would invite folks to, to reach out to the service providers we have in the community. Echo probably would be the, a good one-stop shop to, to initiate that. There are people in this community I know that want to help. Now would be the time to, to step up and help us be able to, to make sure that we have both the places and the people. So I would make that appeal generally in the community. Would anticipate everybody on this dais is going to be doing that over, to an even greater degree over, over this period of time. We have great organizations in town, Caritas, Salvation Army, Front Steps, Community First. Now's the time that we really want to get the community doubly engaged in this.
Mayor, just very quickly about process. I think I heard you say that we have a real estate session on Thursday. Is there any chance we could do that today, just so we could be apprised of, of what the property is that we might be making a decision on in less than a week?
I think we could. And I think that if there are limitations to what you can discuss, then you can tell us in executive session, but we're posted for this item.
Oh, we are posted today?
We're posted formally for executive session on Thursday, but this is on our agenda right now. So to the degree that there is questions about specific properties, we can discuss those specific properties in, in executive session. Can we do that?
Yes, the, the, the real estate executive session can be about negotiations that we're doing for particular properties. And if the real estate office is prepared to do that today, then we can do that.
Yeah, I don't know how other people feel, but I would appreciate a couple extra days to.
We'll do that. We'll get it at our executive session today. It's also on the agenda on Thursday, so if there's more information or data, we can talk about it again on Thursday. It's not on either Thursday's agenda to vote, so we have to talk about how we would be able to get the council to be able to vote on that, maybe next week, if it was, if it was ready and the appropriate thing to do. Okay. Continuing with the homelessness.
Yes, and thank you, Mayor and council, for all your comments and input and sentiment with regard to that program. Next, we're going to bring up Susan McDowell. Susan is the chief executive officer for LifeWorks. As I mentioned, Susan's going to be talking about their efforts to end youth homelessness, and Susan has a variety of staff with her as well.
Thank you all so much. Susan McDowell with LifeWorks. And I think I want to begin by noting, you know, my name is on the presentation today, but I am really merely kind of first chairing this presentation that is about a three-year community campaign and movement that represents the work of literally hundreds of individuals in Travis County, numerous of which are behind me, partners from Echo and SAFE and Caritas and Front Steps. And I was thinking about who to mention, and I was looking around and realizing darn near everybody sitting behind me and in front of me today has been, has been a part of that movement. And for that, I think we, we just have a, a big collective debt of gratitude for what we've been able to achieve. So I really want to make sure that I communicate that this, what I'm going to be talking about over the next few minutes is so much more than any one organization could have accomplished to date, and certainly more than one agency or entity can bring across the, the finish line in the next year. So it's a true, true movement. The second thing I want to communicate is that we've had a great deal of success. And I think, you know, the, the headline of, you know, communities movement to end youth homelessness is following data-driven strategies and achieving incremental steady progress. It's not necessarily a headline, but it is a testament to what, you know, you all have held so consistently over, since June, is that we do know a great deal about what works to end homelessness. And keeping these coalitions together and keeping true to the data and to services we know work will make a, will make a difference. And then the, the third thing I hope to communicate is that we have an exquisite hold on the data around youth homelessness in our committee, both what has, what has worked well and also what it is going to take to, to end youth homelessness. So again, our campaign is a, our intent is to build and sustain a community system. So again, not an individual service provider's capacity, but a community system that ensures that youth homelessness is rare, brief, and non-recurring by 2020. And the system will be in many ways similar to the system that we achieved in our community in 2016 for ending veterans homelessness. And it involves deep systems-level collaboration with dozens not only of nonprofits, but our public entities, including child welfare and, and juvenile justice. So let's talk a little bit about who is experiencing homelessness as a youth. And for the purpose of this discussion, we are talking primarily unaccompanied youth up to the age of 24. Census of, and until very recently, our census of youth homelessness were about 425 in the system. This includes youth who have been through coordinated assessment, and that is again our centralized community assessment that will result in placing somebody on what we call the by-name, the waiting list for, for homelessness. So it includes those youth, but also youth who exist in HMIS, our homelessness, homelessness management information system in some way, either on or, or not on the by-name list. So this includes youth who are sheltered, who are unsheltered, who are what we call category one, experiencing literal homelessness, or who are in precarious situations. So it's a pretty inclusive definition. The median age we're looking at is 21.3. We've got 57% female, 39% male. 31% of youth are part of a family unit, either they are with partners or with children. And I can tell you, almost half of the youth that we housed in rapid rehousing last year were, had, had. were, uh, had, uh, had, were heads of household. So we've got a lot of, a lot of parenting going on. But a couple of things that I want to, to bring out for, for more kind of qualitative consideration. You know, we're, like I said, we've got a, a very data-driven approach to really understanding the problem we're trying to solve, right? So, you know, providing good services, something all of our organizations have done for a long time. But when we're looking at solving youth homelessness, it is essential we really understand what, uh, what the dynamics are of the problems we're trying to solve. So when we learned through our participation in Chapin Hall's Voices of Youth Count, uh, study a couple of years ago, that in Travis County, 76% of youth experiencing homelessness have been in foster care, juvenile justice, or both, that told us that part of our solution, and a very important part of our solution, would have to be bringing both juvenile justice and child protective services to the table in a meaningful way, so we could, uh, assist youth much earlier on in the emancipation process, develop strategies for stable housing and sustainability. So this is a very important part of our movement, and very important partners at the table are both state and county juvenile justice, and also regional, uh, child protective services. I think another piece that is essential to understanding and solving for youth homelessness is understanding the, uh, the disproportionality of youth of color. This slide gives you a sense by, uh, by race of youth homelessness for 15 to 17. So while you absolutely begin to see trends of disproportionality, particularly, and I want you to look over on the left-hand side with Black and African-American youth, 15 to 17, you see some disproportionality, but look what happens when you look at 18 to 19. I'm gonna backtrack just so you really get that. We go from some notable disproportionality to a situation where more than 40% of youth experiencing homelessness are Black or African-American compared to under 10% in the general population. So what happens at 18? You age out of foster care at 18, or you're emancipated from juvenile justice at 18. So again, it just underscores the importance of bringing the public systems to the table that were never intended to raise children to, uh, to adulthood, to ensure that we are helping with these transitions in ways that, uh, that are engaging to youth. And that every step of the way in the system that we are building to end youth homelessness, we are making sure that our, our tools, our staffing, and our services are engaging to, uh, to all populations and not perpetuating the, uh, the structures of institutional racism that we're seeing. I don't think that's me. This gives you a sense of 20 to 24. Right?
It's my phone.
Oh, is it?
No.
It's very catchy. It's very, uh, yeah. 20 to 24, you see the same kind of trends. So what I don't have a slide for that I'll, I'll just wanna speak to is also the disproportionality of LGBTQ, uh, young adults and homelessness as well. So, you know, this gives you a sense of kind of the, the nature of, uh, of what we're trying to solve for in a community, making sure again that all of our facilities, our services, our assessments are, are engaging and appropriate to those who are, who are closest to experiencing the, uh, the pain of homelessness. This slide gives you a sense of, uh, some of our, our key players and the timeline. So this started in 2016. I just mentioned the, uh, our first kind of foray into this as the, uh, community was coming close to hitting the federal benchmarks for ending veterans homelessness. We started, uh, getting the opportunity to participate in some of the federal initiatives around youth homelessness that started with participating in Chapin Hall's Voices of Youth Count survey. Travis County was the first community to, uh, to kind of complete our, uh, our data journey for that, and that gave us a very good, both kind of quantitative and qualitative understanding of, uh, of the exist, of the issue as it was existing in 2020. Then we got, and many of you were a part of this, a, uh, opportunity to participate in a completely unfunded 100-day challenge whereby we, uh, received some technical assistance and methodology to pick a goal, and we picked housing 50 youth in 100 days to do this collaborati, collaboratively with no additional resources. And I'll be honest, I was really hacked off about that for about 47 days until it looked like we could, uh, make the, uh, the finish line. And I, I bring this up because, uh, further on the timeline, uh, you'll see that we, soon after that, our community, uh, received $5.2 million from Housing and Urban Development. And I was showing this slide to a philanthropist the other day, and I pointed to that box and said, "That was a real game changer, right? When you got that $5.2 million?" And I wanna say yes. Everything that's a nonprofit CEO in me wants to say yes, and I don't want to diminish $5.2 million certainly, but I need to be very honest and say the 100-day challenge was the first opportunity we had. An organization of LifeWorks, SAFE, Caritas, Echo, Front Steps, worked together collegially on this issue for, uh, for decades. But it wasn't until we were put to a kind of rapid transformational challenge that we were able to recognize, A, what was working well in our relationships, working together, and B, what was not working well. And what we, uh, what we really learned through that process was we were working well collaboratively, but we were not working as a system. Each of the organizations had different intake processes, so a youth could come to LifeWorks or, you know, stand in line at Caritas or complete an assessment at SAFE. The 100-day challenge really turned the tide in terms of us saying things like, "All right, we're going to figure out how to do coordinated entry together. Okay, we are going to align our case managers." So every two weeks, we're having a meeting saying, "Okay, who's first on the list?" And all turf aside, okay, here's a youth who's experiencing some domestic violence and, uh, maybe they have been trafficked. This is a really appropriate client for SAFE. Well, here's a youth over here who really needs some workforce support. Okay, that, I think LifeWorks is gonna take the lead on that client. So working as a system with humility, with, uh, with, uh, no kind of, um, uh, turf or boundary wars, uh, going on with that. So that was the real game changer in terms of beginning to develop our system. Now, very fortunately, we, uh, we did get the, uh, Youth Homelessness Demonstration Project, which is a two-year, $5.2 million, uh, grant that helped us collaboratively develop a community plan, which then became part of Echo's community plan to end youth homelessness, which came before you all, I think, in, uh, April of, uh, 2018. Through that plan, we identified three cornerstone services, uh, basically aligned with rare, brief, and non-recurring. We had, uh, identified the need for diversion working at the systems level, for a transitional facility for youth to, uh, be able to access soon-after homelessness, transitioning to rapid rehousing. And we identified the need to really develop, uh, our community capacity for rapid rehousing, particularly focused on youth. And so LifeWorks is the lead on all of those three contracts, but particularly the rapid rehousing, which has been our, our kind of largest push, has been a, a very coordinated collaboration between Echo, SAFE, Caritas, and, uh, and LifeWorks. So because this is, uh, uh, creating momentum, I wanted to mention that just a few months ago, because it's one thing to get youth into housing, but we are very focused on how we make this housing successful and sustainable. LifeWorks was just, uh, awarded a couple of months ago a five-year, $4 million grant from, uh, Department of Health and Human Services to expand a workforce program that we had modeled a few years ago, particularly focused on youth who are exiting homelessness. So each of the agencies involved in this collaboration brings resources for this wraparound that are not funded by HUD, not funded by the demonstration project, but really developed in response to our knowledge and the data around what we're, what we're learning youth need to be, uh, to be successful. So we were very delighted to hear in, uh, uh, February of this year, point-in-time count results, uh, indicating a, uh, 25% reduction in youth homelessness and a 56% reduction in unsheltered youth homelessness. So that's not the HMIS data, but it is a, the HUD methodology for, uh, understanding homelessness, and it told us we're, we're on the right, uh, on the right track. So real quickly, key elements of the system. If you wanna follow the blue timeline, it really begins with identifying and engaging youth. So I wanna dial back a couple of years ago when, you know, LifeWorks was doing its thing, Caritas was doing its thing, SAFE was doing its thing, and we were doing a very good job in our silos, identify and engaging youth not working as a system. So think of it as a journey from being very good providers of services and housing, again, to, uh, really coordinating to, uh, to solve a problem. So right now, if any of our organizations or Echo identifies a youth experiencing homelessness, we have two paths. One path can go to our diversion program, and that is a program that could involve light case management, counseling, a little bit of financial assistance, brainstorming with what is the resource? Is there a friend? Is there a relative? What, uh, what can we do to prevent homelessness? Frankly, also divert from a much more expensive, uh, housing intervention as well. So that's the first line. See if, uh, if diversion can, uh, can work. If not, we go to coordinated entry and assessment, and at that point, we kinda go really deep into understanding and determining what are the, what are the vulnerabilities of the youth? Where are they going to be on the by-name list? What kind of safety planning can we do, or what kind of resources can we make possible for youth while they are waiting for housing? And which of our agencies is gonna take the lead in, uh, in doing that? So coordinated assessment, and again, case managers from all the organizations are meeting regularly to touch base on who's first, who's second, what are we doing to, to get them ready? Who is taking the lead? So it's a true coordinated, uh, approach. The, uh, uh, kind of temporary transitional facility in South Austin that I mentioned is called the Port Permanency Through Outreach and Rapid Transitions. Had to do a few backflips with HUD not to call it a shelter, because they won't, uh, they won't fund shelters. But it is a transitional facility that, uh, youth who, what we're doing now is we're taking the, uh, the, the top youth on the by-name list, they're staying in the port while we are navigating for, uh, towards housing. So these are youth whose apartments are gonna be ready pretty soon, so we're doing things like, you know, doing the cleaning up credit histories, or criminal background histories, or, you know, looking at different apartments, going through the mechanics of the, uh, of the leases, right? So, you know, the mayor spoke earlier about the time it takes us to get people into housing, even when the, uh, when the apartments are available. This is meant to shrink that time. Right now, we are taking the top vulnerable, uh, youth on the by-name list. As we shrink the by-name list, hopefully rapidly over the next year, this will be the facility that youth can go to and stay as they experience homelessness and as they are waiting for a permanent housing option. We've got a ways to go on that, but that's the direction we're headed. I mentioned earlier, supportive service, it's our, uh, kind of vast array of wraparound, some funded by HUD, frankly, other pieces funded by, uh, other resources that the agencies are bringing to the table, including, uh, deep mental health services, peer support, uh, workforce placement, and of course, evidence-based case management provided. And then the, uh, the final piece is rapid rehousing. The, uh, Youth Homelessness Demonstration Project allowed, is allowing us the opportunity to test some innovations specifically to help youth be successful in, uh, in that model of, uh, of housing. This just gives you a sense of who is served. We have served 202 transition-aged youth through, uh, the YHDP grant since October of 2018. However, I also wanna note that we've served an additional 60 through other funding sources that, uh, that agencies have brought to the table, including the, uh, the City of Austin. So we have served a total of 262 youth in the last, uh, 14 months. This slide gives you a sense of what the, uh, what the investment looks like, kind of on an annualized basis. The, uh, the deep blue is the YHDP grant. The next, uh, biggest pie is the, uh, uh, HUD COC funding that comes specifically for youth rapid rehousing. You see a big, uh, lighter orange chunk there for the, uh, for the city, and then, uh, smaller portions. We get a little bit from the state for rapid rehousing, and then we've, uh, we've got some philanthropic investment there, and on the, the side you see who some of our philanthropic partners are. I just wanna say, this pie chart only represents the pathway have, we have created to permanent housing. There are many other services provided by LifeWorks and other providers that have to do with street outreach, shelter, transitional living. This just focuses, and the movement focuses on getting youth to, uh, to, to permanent housing.
Yeah, and I just wanna mention quickly, the, um, you know, the YHDP funding, that was the 5.6, or $5.2 million over two years, which is approximately $2.6 million a year. That's now being rolled into our COC funding. So that's gonna be ongoing money that comes to the community year-over-year through our no, our Notice of Funding Availability through HUD. So that, um, was an amazing accomplishment to be awarded, the YHDP, but in order for us to have, you know, a continued investment on the federal level, they needed to see the type of success that's been had. So now that rolls into, um, you know, the four-point, uh, or the 416, I think it says, um, from the larger COC. So that, that number is, um, closer to $3 million year-over-year that'll be coming from the, um, from HUD, uh, to our continuum.
Finally, so, okay, so the first two years, we've developed the collaboration, we've determined what it takes to become a system, not just a bunch of individual service providers. We have stood up the, uh, the cornerstone services, we've seen success, and so now we turn to what is it going to take to hit functional zero, the state at which we're able to house youth at the, uh, the rate that they're, uh, experiencing homelessness. So, um, and this is where I think a lot of communities stumble, is really understanding what their data is and what it's going to take. So at the beginning of the summer, uh, the Echo and LifeWorks data team collaborated to say, "Hey, okay, we know how many youth are on the by-name list, but what, let's really dive into HMIS." Again, the community, uh, the community database, as it were, to really understand how many youth are in the database, what their needs are. You know, I think we've got an overinflated number there because there's no clear way out of the database unless they're getting housing services. But if we're gonna say we're ending youth homelessness, we have to really mean it and be able to, uh, to show that we're addressing a variety of, uh, of homelessness. So we, uh, we dove into this crazy six-week, what we ended up calling targeted assertive outreach, whereby this slide gives you a little bit of methodology for all the youth who are in HMIS, whether they'd been through coordinated assessment or not, received a series of outreaches that utilized email and social media and phone and last known, physical outreach to last known address, and where we felt we knew they were going to hang out, or people who knew them hung out. It was kind of an all-agency endeavor involving volunteers and board members, and that helped us really understand, really, how many youth are we going to need to house in the next year? How many youth are we going to need to, uh, provide maybe some lighter diversion services to? And, uh, what's, uh, what is the pace of all of that going to look like? Because when we, when we come to you and say, "We have created a system that, uh, the, uh, that can handle," we've also learned a whole lot about the inflow into the system. When we say we've ended, uh, youth homelessness, we want to be able to clearly articulate what that, what that means, and at this outset of, uh, 2020, what it's, uh, what it's going to, to take to do that. So this methodology, to our knowledge, it's the first time it has ever been done for any population, and our chief researcher, Liz Schoenfeld, has been on and off the phone with, uh, US Inter-Agency Council on, uh, homelessness to consult about this because they, they see it as a very unique practice too, and one that we certainly in Austin can use for other populations, and that may have some national applicability as well as communities kind of get to this point of really needing to understand what is it gonna take to, to reach the benchmarks.
Yeah, so I just, I wanna, um, provide comment on this too, because I think this is a very important, um, part of, um, what LifeWorks and our, and other partner agencies would be able to do. Most, um, communities, if they have a youth or a, um, someone on their, in HMIS who hasn't had a contact in a certain period of time, will do what's called, just deactivate them from the system, so just say, "Oh, they must have resolved their homelessness situation" and delete their record, and just say, "That's it. That person's no longer in need of services in our community, they must've gone somewhere else, they're self-resolved." This targeted assertive outreach campaign was, we're not just gonna look at those records and, and delete those records, we're gonna make every attempt we can to contact those people to make sure that they, they haven't experienced some emergency that's dropped them out of the provider world, and now they're, you know, they need, they're actually in more need and more help. Um, it was quite a remarkable, um, it was, you know, very well put together, thought out, um, and just a great use, uh, you know, to show that like when we really care about ending homelessness, we're not, we don't just care about getting, um, you know, to the end of a list and to say we solved youth homelessness, to be the first community to do that and put a stamp on, you know, Austin, again, just like the same with veteran homelessness. We actually, we actually wanna end youth homelessness, and that means going out and making sure and, you know, and, you know, working with communities and... communities and, you know, not your everyday community partner, like making sure you're in, you know, the neighborhoods, talking to people, following up in every way, shape, and form that you can to ensure that you've tried to contact the folks that are experiencing unsheltered homelessness or just homelessness in general. So, I think this is just a remarkable campaign. And for myself, you know, and all the work that I've done, just never seen anything like it. So, I just want to make sure we call that out as, you know, pretty remarkable.
Don't get me wrong. We also want to be first. And we have a... We actually... Austin has a very good shot at being the first major urban area to reach rare, brief, and non-recurring for youth homelessness. And we have the system in place. We have a sense of the promising practices and services, which we are continuing to learn from in collaboration with our partners. It's going to be a heavy lift to serve all of the youth who need to be served by the end of 2020, but we have the... both the staff and the board will. And hopefully, some philanthropic momentum to help us with that, too. And I'm happy to take any questions.
I want to again thank you, LifeWorks. I want to thank your board and your philanthropic partners in the community that helped make that happen, the foundations that have stepped forward. I think one of the most important takeaways that I took away from this presentation, again, is we know what works. We know what it takes to effectively end homelessness. We were one of a handful of cities to accomplish that with veterans. And that was not an easy designation to get from HUD. As I recall, when our community thought we had earned it, HUD kept us involved in a data sharing process for months on end. It was a real rigorous process to actually reach acknowledgement of that benchmark. We know it works. I'm excited for the work that you have already done in taking half of youth that were experiencing homelessness on our streets and taking half of them off our streets. You've already done that. And the prospect of being the first city in the country to get to net effective zero homelessness for children and youth. We're on track to be the first, and I think we need to acknowledge that. It also means that because we know what works, if we're not doing it for the larger population, it means we are making a deliberate decision not to do what we know that works. And/or stated positively, I am really proud to be part of a community that recognizes we know what works and therefore, we're going to do what it takes to become a community. And there are only a dozen in the country that are able to say that they've reached net effective zero generally in their community and none big city the size of Austin. And for us to be the first of that size to be able to achieve it is where we have to set our goal and proud to be part of a council that has made that our number-one priority. We need to take what you're doing, what we did with Vets, and scale it up. I appreciate your comment that, you know, the teams have been working, there had been collaboration, but until there was that goal that was set, that created that sense of urgency, that sense of we're going to set the goal and we're scared by it. And we don't know exactly how that's going to work, but we're going to set the goal and then we're going to iterate as we move through it to discover what it is that we need to do is exactly the same thing we did with Vets. Having set the goal, having set the urgency, recognize the urgency in the community, that makes it happen, which again, just by way of postscript, what we're doing with respect to the larger population and the motels feels the same to me. I want us to dive into it and succeed because I believe that if we do that, we will in fact be able to get whatever it is that we need. If we have set that as a goal, we made it urgent, and then we embark on it. I would say, you said that one of the things that long-term is going to be most important is dealing with children and youth before they become homeless, before they start experiencing that, so that you divert them from that, which makes absolute sense to me. And you talked about bringing in the agency partners to be part of that. I'm going to ask you, when you do that, to invite the governor's office itself to participate. And I would invite our state legislative delegation to participate because I know our state leaders are trying to find ways that they can actually and constructively help us end homelessness in our community. And at this point, the state... the state has to do a better job as it emancipates children and youth from foster homes and from incarceration because we have so many of those children that are being released from state responsibility and state care that are ending up on our streets. Because when they turn a certain age or they get released, they are just left alone. And we need the state to do a better job of helping those children before they are emancipated, be put onto a track so that they are just not lost when they reach that age. And that would be a really specific thing that our governor could work on right now that would be so appreciative, not just by Austin, but by cities and communities across the state. That is within the domain and control of the state.
I think a real opportunity we have right now is the statewide rollout of within child welfare, which is called Community-Based Care, which is essentially the regionalization of functions of child protective services to give kind of lead nonprofits control over the placement and management of youth who are in care so that they don't move all over the state while in foster care. They achieve permanence sooner rather than later, so effectively slowing the pipeline that we know ends in... can end in homelessness. And I'm going to look back here at Julia Span with SAFE. They're a... Community-Based Care has not come to Region 7 yet, but it will likely within the next few years. And you already have providers working with the state with each other to begin to figure out what that could look like here in partnership with the state. So, we begin to slow the pipeline or we don't make it an inevitable pipeline to homelessness for child welfare.
To that end, Matt, if you could get the details of that, if you could send a letter to the governor's office and to our delegation outlining that specific request, as we identify things that the state could really do that would help us, I think it would be good for us to point those things out to the state leadership, who I recognize are trying to help at this point. So, let's tell them in very clear direction where we can. Two more things real quickly. The first is, I'm glad to hear we have the successful program with the HUD money. And if you are successful with a HUD money program and you can demonstrate that, then the money then turns into annual funding. I look at a city like Houston, which is doing really well with respect to their general homelessness count in their city. What they were really good at 10 years ago was figuring out how to get money for pilot programs, show success, and then keep the HUD money. So, Houston now is getting about $40 million a year from HUD because they've done successful programs that have been funded. I think that Austin is down at like $4 million or somewhere in that range.
You know, our Notice of Funding application went in at this year at 10.2 around, but that's because of the jump from YHDP. It was around 6.3.
Six million dollars. We need to do that. And if we can get, you know, increase the HUD funding, let's figure out how to do this because we're now going to invest locally. So, this is the opportunity to really show success on as many things as we can pilot. I know that you're doing that. And then finally, to touch briefly, you have the census count that you talked about. I think it's really important that we get a more accurate number of who it is in our community that's experiencing homelessness. And what you're doing with the targeted assertive outreach seems to be something that we need to scale up and do with the overall numbers. I know you're working in that direction. That's making sure that everybody on the list is still there. I think we have a really unique opportunity coming up this January when we do the point-in-time count. And I want, Matt, I'm going to end with you talking about that for just a second. But we have a really unique opportunity because I think that, and I hope that in some ways, that when we do the point-in-time count in January this year, our number goes up. Because my belief is, is that we are in a better position today to actually find more of our neighbors that are experiencing homelessness than we have ever been before, in part because the council has taken steps not to hide poverty in our community, but to see it and to recognize it. We have people that used to be hidden and lost that are now visible and apparent. And I know that that creates angst and frustration sometimes, anger, all kinds of emotions. But it also means that we now see these people and we can count them and we can provide services to them and we can put them in line to get housing and homes in our city. Have you... My last question then to you, Matt, is have you identified when that point-in-time count is going to be? And is there an opportunity for people in our community that want to help us really make sure that we can count everybody? Is there a way for people to be able to help?
Sure, thanks. So, the, yes, the point-in-time count this year is January 25, 2020. And the ECHO website is a great place to go to sign up, to be a volunteer there. We have team lead positions we need to fill. We have general volunteer positions we need to fill. We're looking to try to get 1,000 volunteers this year and 90 team lead positions, and we're on our way. There's also a link there to a ways to donate goods that will be handed out on that night through Amazon that you can... There's a preferred, like a request for certain items that you can click on and they can get sent directly to ECHO to be handed out. And so, that's at xecho.org. And I would just like to reiterate, we, you know, what's being done with the youth right now through this demonstration project, but really through just a larger collaborative with all the folks behind us and LifeWorks at the helm. I think, I mean, the by-name list, they meet weekly, all representatives for all these providers, and go through names of people, like a comprehensive list of people experiencing homelessness in our community and tick people off one at a time as we're resolving their homelessness and add people to the list as they fall in. And I think that's crucial. And I also think what's crucial is just to reiterate the fact that, yeah, the point-in-time count, we might see an increase this year, we may not. But I will say, you know, programs like the assertive, the targeted outreach, we want to end homelessness here. We don't want to just say that we have zero folks in our database. I mean, I think that's a really important thing. Yeah, there might be more folks, more visible folks. There is a benefit to that for us, for the service provider perspective, be able to engage with people more readily. And I don't... We're not going to be convinced by some database that we've ended homelessness. We're going to use our data really well, but we're also going to... We're going to recognize where there's limitations to the data and go out and engage with people on a personal level. And so, that's what... That's the difference between what we're doing here in Austin and what's happened in other communities and what our commitment is to ending homelessness here in Austin. So...
So, I would just... It is a lot of fun, actually, to join this group of hundreds of people that head out at 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the morning. I've done it here in the last several years with Kathy. And I think there are other council members on the dais that have participated as well. They have like doughnuts, you know, in the wee hours. But it's a way to actually meet people in the community, to engage and learn. It's a collective in our community that's heading out. It is really valuable work. It is a real fulfilling and warming opportunity and work. You just can't sign up and then go. People who sign up, you ask to come for a briefing to talk about it. So, people need to know, mark the 25th on your calendar to come in and meet the community, but also know that you have to sign up ahead of time so that you can go to one of the briefings ahead of time in order to be part of the group that heads out.
Yeah, that's correct. Thank you for hearing that. There's going to be trainings throughout December and January to get people ready. The team leads have a separate training for that. And for the first time this year, for the first time, we'll be using an app. So, it'll be an app-based count, which will allow us, you know, to not have to bring out paper forms, get paper forms filled out, and then to correlate, you know, bring the paper forms and put them into systems that can better interpret the data. So, it's really, I think, we're going to get our numbers quicker this year. We're going to have better data this year, I think, than ever before because of the use of the app. And I think, you know, just one more highlight on, I think, some of the things we're doing here in Austin that aren't done nationwide.
And to the media, I would suggest this is great content. I mean, it is... Go back to the news producers. Everybody should be out. Everybody should join a team and maybe even go to some of the training sessions ahead of time, you know, to let people know that the trainings are happening and to see that. But it is great content just to be embedded with one of the teams that go out in the community. It's already happened, but I think only one station. Everybody should be out doing this kind of stuff. Allison?
Thank you, and good morning. I want to thank you, Ms. McDowell and Mr. Malika for being here. And thank ECHO and LifeWorks and SAFE and Caritas for their real focus on ending youth homelessness, as we've had a lot of folks engage in the conversation about homelessness for the first time over the last several months. The Ending Youth Homelessness Group has been one of my go-tos in terms of showing people what this can look like when we focus, when we have the resources. I think this approach really demonstrates all the ways we can constructively respond to the challenge. It addresses concerns that I've heard in the community who wants to see that we are recognizing that not just the humanity of the folks who are homeless, but also that they are experiencing it in different ways, coming to it with different past life experiences, and that the pathways out of homelessness differ across different populations. And so, that focus on youth, that really targeted look at what does this particular person need to move forward, and also the look at prevention and looking at what are the sources. I think for the community who is new to this conversation, I think the content that you're presenting today is really valuable to demonstrate what this does look like in our community and what it can look like. So, thank you for focusing this work. I've seen it evolve over the last several years from the very, very beginning, from before I was on council. And it's very exciting to see that we are close to our goal in 2020. I wanted, though, to invite you to speak a little bit about how folks can get involved if they're looking for a way to enter the homelessness conversation in a very focused way and want to know we're helping a particular population. Today is Giving Tuesday, so one way to do that is to donate. I believe there's someplace you can go that's specifically for the coalition. Obviously, you can give to ECHO and LifeWorks, SAFE, and Caritas. So, if you could speak to if someone wants to donate to this specific initiative to get us to the 2020 goal, how do they do that? And if you can speak to specific ways that beyond the point-of-time, point-in-time count, that folks who want to engage on any end of the spectrum, any part of the spectrum of the solutions that you're talking about, how they would do that, whether it's the foster care or if it's being engaged as a mentor or donating in-kind or babysitting for folks who need it so they can go to their works. So, if you could just speak to those opportunities as we reflect today being Giving Tuesday, I'd like to invite you.
Absolutely. I'll start and then hand it over to you. Yes, when I got up this morning and I'm like, what happened to my email overnight? I'm like, right, it's Giving Tuesday, right? So, I think, and thank you for bringing attention to Giving Tuesday. We don't have a Giving Tuesday site set up for the collective so much as the individual agencies who are participating. So, if, you know, if there's interest in philanthropic donations, you know, I would go to the ECHO or LifeWorks or SAFE or Caritas website where we've got kind of that robust sites set up for Giving Tuesday or, for that matter, any organization that's involved in homelessness support in the area. In terms of engaging in this particular movement in a more ongoing capacity, I would also look, this is the holiday season, right? And there are a lot of needs above and beyond the basic housing. You know, we are just wrapping up at LifeWorks our Project Holiday Help, which, you know, adopts many youth, some of them still living on the street, others newly housed, to kind of create a holiday where otherwise there would be none. So, that exists at LifeWorks, and I guarantee you, it also exists with all of the partner organizations. So, again, find, you know, whichever organization, kind of the population resonates with you. So again, find, you know, whichever organization, kind of the population resonates with you, SAFE or Caritas, LifeWorks or Echo. You can be involved in a very relevant way for the holiday season. I will also say, so, you know, we will likely over this next year have to house a couple hundred more youth. Plus, most of these youth are moving into their very first apartment, right? So I think engaging with the collaborative to provide assistance for all of the stuff that they need to move in, right? We can afford the apartment, but then, you know, who's buying laundry detergent? And how is the kitchen getting stocked and are there dishes there? So, you know, on our, most of us, including LifeWorks on our websites, have a sense of, have campaigns and lists of, you know, apartment starter kits or parenting starter kits for, for supplies. So that's another piece. I think the, the other way that people can be honestly of assistance, particularly during this time where there is so much, so much dialogue, some of it very rancorous around kind of coming to grips with homelessness and the new visibility in Austin and all of our feelings about that, is just be ambassadors in understanding the, the issue. And at LifeWorks, we have a program where you can come in, take a tour, understand the issue much deeper and then volunteer to be an ambassador to get the word out in a systematic way to, to people in your networks. So that's something you can find out through the, through the LifeWorks website. Because I think one of the, you know, we're going to have to house a couple hundred youth in the next year, but on an ongoing basis, we, we need to participate in an enduring community dialogue to understand why youth are homeless and how we can systematically work further and further back in, in prevention and help families succeed. So we're not creating this pipeline.
Yeah, that was comprehensive, but I'll also just add, so if you do go to one of our websites, you know, if you go to Echo and you say, I want to donate specifically to this initiative, of course, you know, you can decide where your money will go. And, you know, if you say, I want to serve youth experiencing homelessness and you go to Echo website to do that, obviously that's what LifeWorks does, but if, you know, if there are folks out there that want to help on a specific initiative, you can donate at the websites and just say, that's what I want, where I want my money to go. And I'll also just say the, you know, one other thing, I think that especially for youth that I've, you know, through my time in this work have realized, it's that connection to community is really important. So if you have folks who are, you know, that want to donate, you know, a certain number of rec passes to LifeWorks, to the, you know, Community Rec Center, you know, ways that they can get involved in, you know, and they're, and bringing those folks that are living in their communities into their community more, right? So, you know, LifeWorks, we're, we're housing folks in scattered site housing in, in all of the districts, in everyone's communities. And so, you know, if they want to bring gym memberships and donate those to LifeWorks that then LifeWorks can hand out to folks, those are really good ways to get people involved. You know, memberships to local, you know, theaters or movie tickets and things like that, just things that bring connection to community. Those are, those are also important.
And I think just normal safe, right?
Yeah, oh yeah, of course.
Want what other youth have.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Thanks very much for all the great work that you and your partners do and, and the success that you're achieving in, in housing individuals who are youths who are experiencing homelessness. I had just a quick question about, I was interested in knowing what the results of your targeted assertive outreach looked like.
Yes.
If you could give us some sense of, of who were still in the HMIS system, were they, had they been housed? Have they reunited with their families? What, what did that pool look like?
So, so we've got some data and I want to kind of talk about how, how it's layered. So we've got the results of, we have a good sense of who we need to serve and how we need to serve them in the next year. And that is a result of, the results of targeted assertive outreach and what we have learned about, you know, a certain percentage of youth self-resolve and we've got a much better understanding of who's more likely to self-resolve and a good sense of who will, what type of youth will access what service and be successful either in rapid rehousing or diversion. So you take all of those things into account.
And I, so we do have those numbers to, to present today and I just want to say how it's not normal for communities to have like this type of level data on this population. So I'm going to present it and then also, you know, just to recognize that it's been the, the folks back here along with my Echo colleagues who aren't represented here, the, the work that they've done to get, to bring this data forward is just, I mean, it's, it's a lot of intense work. And the funding was available to also prioritize this as, as a, you know, a need in the community to have this type of data. So we, we also need to, to raise up funding streams in order to be able to do this for the general people experiencing homelessness populations that we have. And I think we're poised to do that. So, you know, there's a current, there's a, it shows a current need and this is a, of 261 youth in need of services. 213 of those youth are unhoused and 48 are housed. There's a predicted inflow, monthly inflow of 45.2 people each month into the system. 35.8 of those are unhoused youth and 9.4 of those would be housed. So what that means is that they're just, their housing is not stable and secure into that system. So out of that number, you know, there's a projected need to end youth homelessness by December 2020, which is the goal of 448 youth that will need access to those, to resources provided. 244, it's been identified, will need access to either rapid rehousing or permanent supportive housing and 204 will need diversion. And that is incredible that we, we can sit here and present, I'm presenting this number, I probably shouldn't be. There's a bunch of other people that should be presenting this number, but I'm just saying it. But like the fact that we can give you that information is pretty outstanding. There's a funding request along, I mean, there's a funding need along with that. So I just want to, before I turn my microphone off, want to also mention that there is, you know, we're looking at, you know, between the 3.4 and 4.9 million dollar need to close that gap. So I just want to be really clear to end homelessness in our community. And we will be, to end youth homelessness to make it rare, brief and non-recurring by the end of 2020.
And this is also, I want to point out, Mary Beth Jester, the Chair of the LifeWorks Board, who will tell you this is pretty much all the LifeWorks Board is talking about right now, is the resource strategy philanthropically, foundation-wise, public-wise to, to get there.
Thank you very much. That's really helpful.
You gave us the number of 45 people, 45 children, youth entering every month. What's the number on exits?
We're slow right now because we have, you know, we went through a rapid surge with, with YHDP. So I'm not sure Liz, do you know what our? So we're going to need more resources before we see more than a, we're at a steady state right now. So we're going to need.
And just for, for the community, reaching a place where we're rare, brief and non-recurring does not mean we don't have new people that are experiencing homelessness. It means that the rate at which people experiencing homelessness is less than the rate that we're actually moving people out so that our system. To that end, I had heard the number, the 3.4 to the 3.9 million dollars necessary to, to be able to reach that equilibrium place, to be able to, to get the backlog, to get people out on an ongoing basis then, as you're just supplying. The cost goes down on an annual basis because you, you don't need to fix the backlog anymore. It's just a question of.
Right. So that, that amount is to get to functional zero. Once we get to functional zero, which means housing the backlog, the by name list and hopefully building the capacity of diversion so the pipeline slows. We think we can exist on the YHDP level of funding. Plus, the LifeWorks Board is talking about what philanthropically, how do we need to ramp up to maybe raise some extra in case there's, there's extra need there.
Yes.
And I do, go ahead.
No, I just want, I just want to reiterate that. That's really important. So yeah, the existing level of funding that's coming into the community, that the, the 2.6 million dollars annually that we've applied for through our NOFA, our Continuum of Care Funds. You know, the idea is that that could then be the sustaining number, the most of the sustaining number to keep us at functional zero. You know, HUD's not paying for all the folks that, you know, where we should have figured this out five, 10 years ago. And then we have to really turn our focus to, which we will, quickly turn our focus to stemming the tide of why, why we have a 45.2 inflow every year? What, what factors are contributing to large and disproportionate numbers of people of color entering that system? And let's attack with the same ferociousness that we attacked this to, to start to see some systemic change.
Right. And again, just as a postscript, that 45 number, hopefully the governor will help us on that. It's a real good area. He could help us with that number in a very material way. But I want the public to understand that we're putting in a lot of money and resources right now, systemically in the community to deal with the challenge of homelessness. But, but if we do this now, if we make this investment now, if we, if we take care of the backlog now, then on an ongoing basis, the costs to our community to be able to sustain that, to maintain rare, brief and non-recurring homelessness in our community goes, goes, goes down. So this is a, obviously a difficult time. It's, it's putting our shoulder to the stone. It's asking the community to get involved. But on a sustaining level, the costs will go down when we are successful in doing this. Okay. Anybody else have anything else on this topic? Thank you very much for that presentation. Do you want to talk to us generally about homelessness in the city? How are we doing on 311 calls? How are we doing with, with cleanups? I want people to understand everything that everybody is continuing to, to do on this front. You've talked about the motel strategy. What else is going on?
Absolutely. And we've got the various priority area leads here. As we, we meet weekly for council's information to talk about generally what's going on in the city. With regard to cleanups, Richard McKell is here. He can certainly talk about the efforts that we've been undertaking in the cleanup area.
Okay. And when you say you meet weekly to talk about what's going on in the city, you're talking about meet weekly just on homelessness? To talk about what's happening on homelessness.
Exactly. We have, as council was made where we have developed priority areas with regard to homelessness and we've identified priority area leads. And so the leads convene weekly as well as support staff. And we talk about what are the things that we are scaling up? What are some things that we need to pay attention to? What are some things that we've seen that need to be addressed? I can tell you with all sincerity, this is truly all hands on deck. This is the city's highest priority to address homelessness initiatives. So it's not just the motel strategy. That's only one part of what we're doing. It's the most recent effort, of course, that you've seen. But we are focused on cleanups. We're focused on communications. We're focused on our day-to-day service delivery, working with our various service providers, as the manager pointed out. We're also looking at hiring consultants to help us identify areas in our contracts where we can focus on performance and get everyone aligned to move in the same direction. So.
Maybe we could have the team leads go through and everybody could give us a quick 60-second update on what's happening in those areas.
Sure, we can certainly start with Richard McKell.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, Mayor Pro Tem. Update on cleanups, we've seen calls reduced about 15% since September. So calls coming into 311, we've had about 318 calls in the month of November. ARR has taken over the Violet Bag Program as far as purchasing new bags and building the kiosk and supplying the bags and obviously picking them up as well. So we're currently at five sites with the Violet Bags, but we're looking to also expand that as we see needs across the city. Tech Dot has been contacted by Public Works. We are trying to get a multiple use agreement signed by them. This will allow us to put trash receptacles under the highways. We're looking at 183, I-35, 290, 71 and MOPAC. Just as general, there'll be five separate agreements. We've included each of those road segments in those agreements. This gives us flexibility to put those containers instead of labeling individual intersections. Gives us the ability to put trash receptacles as needed through those areas. We've also been reaching out to some additional partners to coordinate work with them. That includes Union Pacific Railroad. They had contacted us about some right-of-way areas that they had some concerns with. We'll, we'll be addressing those that the City of Austin has jurisdiction with and we've referred a couple of those, or we will be referring a couple of those to Tech Dot because Tech Dot has jurisdiction on two of those areas. The other ones, we're also working with Union Pacific and Public Works to determine how we're going to clean those up because those have very difficult access to get to those areas. In fact, we couldn't even really review the areas because we couldn't access them from the road area. So we'll, there'll be further information on that. We'll also be working with the Central Texas Regional Mobility Authority on areas that are under their control as they've been doing some cleanups and they haven't been part of the conversation with us at this point. So we'll be contacting them here shortly, particularly areas on 183 and MOPAC, any toll road areas that we have concerns with. And just to give you an update for November, in fact, the Public Works administering, those contractors picked up about over 14 tons of material for the month of November. And that doesn't even include last week. We gave the contractor a break last week. There was no cleanups during the week of Thanksgiving, although ARR staff did do their regularly scheduled cleanups. The group is also working on some options for storage, both the short-term and long-term options. So the short-term would be what do we do with materials that are personal belongings that we want to hold on to folks that we encounter during cleanups? The other is more of a long-term, more of a walk-in type thing. So folks that are experiencing homelessness for any materials they have, that they would be able to store those materials on a more regular, permanent basis. So we hope to have something in the first quarter of 2020 to bring to y'all, to get that moving. So.
To provide the permanent storage.
Yes. And I think with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Allison.
I just wanted to say thank you for whatever you did over by 183 and Great Hills. The litter that was along the road, it wasn't the underpass, seems to have been cleaned up. So thank you.
And what we've noticed when we do in the cleanups, folks are tending to move around a bit. So we're trying to be as fluid as we can. When they move, we try to move and follow them to do it. So we have seen some increases in litter around the Lakeline Mall, Lakeline Exit and 183. So we'll be talking with our partners about that area as well.
Yeah, I mean, the area that I was talking about, it was never clear that it was from homeless people or it was just the side of the road was never, it wasn't the underpass. It was the whole length of the frontage road and it was unclear what the source was because the underpasses were cleaned, but the side of the road was not.
And again, for the, for the public, we, we didn't do anything this year that increased the amount of trash that was being produced in our community. But when you think about how much more, now that you have doubled, tripled or greatly increased the amount of cleanups that we do as a city, combined with, with what it is that the state is doing, so much greater effort now than, than before, it really does make you wonder about the trash accumulation that was occurring in this city that we just didn't see. And absolutely unsustainable situation. So I'm happy, pleased and encouraged now that we're, we're actually addressing a challenge that was growing but not really being dealt with till now. And it's good to hear that the calls have gone down in the whole month of November, a total of 309 311 calls.
318 in November. Yeah, that was down from 367 in September.
Down from 367. And it's been moving down as you've been entering this program before that. So thank you, thank you for that. Keep us aware of that number. Anything else on this report? Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Next, we're going to bring up Vella Carmen from our Austin Public Health to talk about service delivery updates.
Okay.
Good morning, Vella Carmen, Austin Public Health. Just a few updates. We have been looking and having several meetings with community partners for services to meet basic needs of individuals such as showers and laundry opportunities and looking at what that might cost and where those services might be located throughout the community. We also continue our contract with the National Alliance and Homelessness. Part of that contract was to provide a two-day diversion training for our community partners. We had over 100 people attend that training and that was provided by both Org Code Consulting and National Alliance and Homelessness, who are experts on, on those practices. And our, our work continues with the National Alliance and Homelessness on transitions happening at the arch, which are continuing. We're looking at data and really seeing some good progress there. They, when they came to visit here last month, they were, had a lot of great things to say about the progress that's happening at the arch. So any questions about service delivery?
Any questions in this area? Thank you. Kathy?
Yeah, I do. Thanks very much. Can you talk a little bit about the progress with housing individuals outside the arch who are on the by name list? Kind of where we are with.
Right. So the Guided Path Project continues. We are, every week we are meeting with the community partners with the by name list and making progress on getting folks into programs and into housing. I don't have any specific numbers. I don't have any specific numbers for you right now, but we have looked at the gaps now that we've had a few weeks under our belt of the resources needed and we're looking at how we might resource that for this particular project and then if we might expand that type of encampment strategy moving forward as well.
Thank you. Is that, are those, is that more detailed information, something that you would be able to provide us with outside of this session?
Sure. We could. We could certainly.
A question.
And to that end, I think those are the exact numbers that need to come here every week. So you should just plan on having those numbers so that we can track them and we can talk to Communications in a second. I want to know how we're posting that on a dashboard so that everyone can see those on a weekly basis. So if you could get those numbers out and then next week or next time, be prepared with those, that'd be great. Mayor Pro Tem?
The shower, you said something about showers. My question generally is, and then I'll give an example of why I'm asking it. I'm sure like everybody here, we're getting approached a lot about organizations that want to provide services and I wasn't sure where to direct them. And so, for example, I was at a ribbon cutting for a Meals on Wheels thing at a church and somebody said that they had bought, the church had bought a trailer to provide showers and they wanted to know who to be connected with. And so we tried to connect them with our homeless strategy officer and they weren't able to meet with them for like three weeks and then the organization was kind of disappointed about that. It sounds like maybe we should have connected it to you because you just said that, but I just don't know what, and I guess this is a question for Rodney. Where, I guess everybody's going to our homeless strategy officer and I could see where that is getting overwhelming and is, if they're asking for meetings and, you know, she's getting extremely full calendar, but if it's something that, if there's a way to know when we get these requests, who to direct them to, that would help.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And some of that is the newness of the approach that we've just undertaken with the priority area leads. I think we're about a month into it or a month and a half into it for that very reason, because the homeless strategy officer was getting overwhelmed with a lot of requests. By separating into priority area leads, we can then start diverting those types of requests to the various priority area leads. So some of it is just working through this new system that we've implemented, but it really is a good point that what we don't want to do is have requests like that fall through the cracks and we lose time on acting on those requests. And so some of it is just us working through those kinks of making sure that, that when those are received, that the priority area leads can then take those requests and run with them.
And so you, I'm sorry.
Oh, so that actually, that request actually did come to us from the homeless strategy office.
Okay.
Last week. Not sure what day it is, but very recently. And I've been in contact with them prior and so I'm aware of that agency and their willingness to help. They have some specific technical needs on, and I'll have to figure out some. But so that did get to.
Okay.
To me and my team. But I, with the holidays and with lots of transition, we could, we can make that a smoother process for sure.
Okay. And I totally understand the channels, but that was a request that I spoke with them three weeks ago. So I just wanted to see what the best way to, if there's a, like, we have a flow chart of all the areas under each city manager. So we know if something is an issue, we go to that assistant city manager. And so if maybe there's a little flow chart that we can, you can provide to our offices. Thanks.
Absolutely.
All right. Next, we're going to bring up APD Chief Brian Manley to give an update on the public safety priority area.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, Brian Manley, Chief Police. Couple of updates. First and foremost, personnel issues. I know that we feel it's very important to have one person that is front and center on the issues of both homelessness and mental health. And with some recent changes in my staff, I have now moved Assistant Chief Joe Chacon over to take over this area. And so Joe has got experience working with mental health issues and all of that in the department based on previous assignments that he has held. So he will now be our single point of contact within the department, leading the efforts as we work on the issue of those experiencing homelessness. The updates for this week, we continue to partner with Public Works on their cleanup efforts to provide security during those cleanup operations. We are in contact with DPS regarding the temporary shelter that has been placed down on South 183. No real significant issues to this point, other than we were notified there was one eviction. I believe there had been a disturbance between some of the individuals living at that encampment and they ended up removing one person. I don't have a lot of information because it was a DPS operation, but we were notified that they did have to make one relocation or removal. I know many of you all received via social media some pictures of an encampment that was set up along South Congress. There are those two alcoves, those two cut-ins that are very, I guess, sought after for setting up encampments. We'd had a person moved in there at one point and was selling bike parts. Now what you saw was those pictures. I know several of you all got tagged. The officers went out there and upon reviewing that area, there are actually access points for public utilities and all that within those inlets. And so there is a safety concern for having people block access to those public utility points. So we were able to get voluntary compliance, explain to the individuals that were there, the reasons why they couldn't be there, and that area was then cleaned up. We're currently working on a weekly report that we will provide to management, mayor and council with enforcement numbers. I don't have numbers for you today, but we will be giving you weekly numbers on either calls for service that we're receiving or if we've had to take any action, whether it be through the informal requests to move where we're gaining compliance. Or again, we're not seeing much of that as the official actions of having to either cite or arrest, but we're working on a report that will self-promulgate every week so that we can produce that information for you.
Any questions in this area? Thank you.
Thank you.
And next we'll bring up Rebecca Giello, who is our priority area lead for housing.
Rebecca Giello, Deputy of Neighborhood Housing and Community Development Department. I'll be very brief. I really wanted to highlight an event that we are hosting actually today as we speak, as well as this evening. It's a stakeholder meeting and we do this each year through our Housing Developer Assistance Program. That program, of course, a component of that is the Rental Housing Developer Assistance Program, which as you know, facilitates the funding of rental units. And it also facilitates the opportunity for us to partner with nonprofit as well as private sector developers to increase our permanent supportive housing units. We have been successful in increasing the participation through the Memorandum of Understandings with ECHO to advance our numbers and increase the number of permanent supportive housing units coming out of our key funding in that particular area. So we encourage the community as well as developers and service providers to look at our website at www.austin texas backslash housing. All of the information about that stakeholder meeting is there and input is welcome.
Is there a place to be able to track the permanent supportive housing and the units that are being made available with motel purchases or, and also to be able to track the number of folks that are receiving the rental assistance grants so that we can see over time if we're increasing capacity?
Yes, I'm actually glad you ask about that. Our affordable housing inventory is being populated with that information. We actually have a contract with ECHO and ECHO is facilitating the reporting of the units for our city investment. In addition, and we'll be actually bringing a initiative whereby we are aggregating data from multiple regional partners to lift data up online. And so that Open Data Portal initiative is underway and we actually look forward in the near future to bringing that to our Housing and Planning Council Committee and then obviously to counsel through memorandum as well as demonstration of that particular data. But the answer to that is yes, with more information coming that I think this council will be pleased to see.
Do you have an estimate as to when you think those two data sets would be available for people to be able to see?
Our goal is to launch that data publicly in January. There's a subset of that data that is available on the Open Data Portal, but the regional data in January.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Thank you.
And the final priority area is communications and we'll have Keith Reeves come and provide an update.
Mayor, Council members, thank you for having me today. Keith Reeves, Acting Deputy Director of the Public Information Office. So we continue to push out stories for folks in educational awareness of what the city is doing to address people experiencing homelessness. We've recently pushed out a video of the host team. Also, we've got one working for underpass cleanup and we have one running right now on the improvements, the cleanup around Arch. We continue to work on identifying a tool for the dashboard that's going to be on the website. Still determining what the data points are and so exactly what we're going to be putting out there and then having some narrative around what those, what those numbers mean. We continue to work with our partners on a joint communications effort and we're in the early stages of identifying a campaign that we can work on with them to just address why people are in that situation, what's being done, that sort of thing. Those are, I think, my main, my primary updates. Does anyone have any questions?
So I thought, I thought the video that you did on the host team was great. The one on the, on the, on the file package was great.
Oh, great.
I want to do everything we can to have as many people see that as we possibly can. When you create a video like that, if you could send a link to everybody on council and ask the council to send that out in their newsletters or on their social media, use the council to, anything you release on this subject area, if you could highlight it and bring it, I know you bring it to the media. I know you put it on the TV, on that's, everything, everything you do. Please send a link to everybody on council so that we can help push it too. In addition to that, if you could send it to all the service providers that we have and ask them to put it on their websites and on their newsletters to their folks and onto their social media so that it gets promoted as much as we can. The pieces are too good to not have really, really broad dissemination. So I'd like to see that happen.
Yes, sir.
It's good to hear you're moving forward with the dashboard. Been something we've been talking about for a while. Do you have a feel for when it is, what's your goal for launching the dashboard?
We're hoping to launch that in January.
Okay. That'd be great. And then the campaign, I think that a lot of people really want to start seeing the campaign in terms of get to know the people who are experiencing homelessness, how they got there, who they are, so that people can understand, our wider community can understand that these are our neighbors and they could be any one of us. What's your goal for being able to launch that campaign?
Well, we, so we get two things there. It's working with the partners and doing requests for proposals and stuff like that for an outside vendor to come in and help with some of that. That's going to be a little bit more longer term. I would guess that's probably going to be in the spring, but we're starting off with doing an in-house video. We've already started production on that. Working with Downtown Austin Community Court to identify people who have gone through case manager there and had some, had some success to just show, you know, some of the, some of the human element of why people might be in that.
So if you're thinking that the formal campaign be in the spring, so imagine March is kind of time, March kind of timelines, does that sound about right?
That sounds about right.
And then the ones that you're doing in-house that you're working on now in the Downtown Community Court, when do you anticipate getting those out?
We were hoping by the end of this month, it might be early January.
Okay. If it slides from early January, will you let us know?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions about communications? We're doing so much in the city and I'm not sure that it's getting out to the community generally. And I want the community to really know how active this city is. We're the most active player by far with our partners in this industry and I'm not sure it's playing that way in the, in the media and I want it to reflect reality.
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
I have one question.
Yes.
I was also curious, at one time, at one point in time, there was the thought that perhaps individuals who wanted to be kept up to date on what we were doing with regard to homelessness could sign up for a, could sign up to receive periodic newsletters. And I think I had talked to Stephanie Hayden about that at one time and that was specifically with regard to the shelters and the timeline process for that. So I'm just curious if that would be something, I think we might do that for other issues where we have the ability, people to sign up and be on a list where they can actually receive emails. So if that is something that we have the capability of doing and, I mean, y'all think about it, think if you think it's worthwhile, but I think we've done that with regard to other things. And it's, it's a pretty direct way to keep people in touch who may be interested.
Yeah. Let us talk about it from the communication standpoint because we don't necessarily have a newsletter per se on homelessness initiatives, but we do have a lot of news stories that are pushed out.
Yeah.
And so we could certainly think about it from that perspective when we push information out.
Yeah.
How do we use that database so that way those individuals are informed as well?
Yeah, that's what I mean. It wouldn't have to be a newsletter. It would be, if you're, I was just thinking of ways when you push out information to directly reach people that have expressed an interest of being, in being kept up to date.
Absolutely. Let us think about that because the more information, the better. And Mayor, to your point, I think that these briefing sessions help to get the information out and to have our service providers like LifeWorks come and present really valuable information as was presented this morning with regard to ending youth homelessness. That gets the information out in a very valuable way about initiatives that are being done here in Austin and not in any other major city. And so I think what you're seeing is that we do have best practices here in Austin that are underway and we've got a great team of community providers and staff that are working on this issue day in and day out.
And I think it's great too. And I think this, these meetings are a great way to get it out. It'd be great if we could take the LifeWorks, maybe create a little 30-second clip or 45-second clip on it and get that out to everybody that all the council members could send out and to the media so that the number of people that know what happened here today with LifeWorks gets multiplied 10, 100-fold. That kind of leveraging these kind of moments, I think, is really kind of the next thought in terms of the communications effort. But I think it's great. Really valuable information. Kathy?
I like the idea of a regular newsletter. For a while, while the innovation team had a grant, they were doing kind of a weekly I-Team update related to homelessness and that might be a good model for the kind of information that we could get out on a, on a regular basis.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Greg?
And I want to echo the point that our social service providers in the city are helping so many people and are ramping that up so much, so quickly that, you know, when it's, it's well and good to have a campsite that helps, has around a dozen people at it by the last news reports that I heard, but then hearing from LifeWorks that when we ask about how many folks in youth homelessness alone have gotten help, it's, you know, well over 200 people just on the youth homelessness side and then on adult homelessness, hundreds more that the city is helping support get into permanent housing and permanent solutions. And then we're trying to make major purchases and make major investments to increase that by hundreds and hundreds more. And so I, so often when I talk to people in the community, they may have heard of a campsite that helps a dozen people, but not so often heard about the hundreds of people that are receiving support through the city that we're, that we're hearing about in these, in these work sessions. So I just want people to, to be able to see how it is, what scale it is that we're currently providing services and how much more we're trying to do and for them to actually understand those numbers and the, and the scale of the help that we're, that we're already providing and then trying to provide.
It'd be really nice if our community knew that we're averaging 172 people a month that are having successful exits from homelessness and the community doesn't know that number. But they should because there's so much work that's happening. I think that's a good point. Anything else on this? All right. Thank you. Rodney, thank you for the work you're doing. You're, you're leading a team now here of 20 different department heads that are reporting and I know you're working really fast on this. You're reacting to the urgency. Please continue to act. It is still urgent.
Yes.
And, and we have momentum and will. Let's take advantage of it while we have that.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Great job.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, Council, let's go to the pulled items. Before we get there, just real fast, Leslie, the, what we were tracking in terms of which you had posted earlier, the tax impact question, was I think the first thing that had been on your list. There's a special presentation on that today at 1:00 that the staff is, is, is doing. a special presentation on that today at 1:00, that the staff is, is doing, you had raised the parking issue, I had thought that that would come up in the transportation section that was posted on the, on the board, it was part of the, kind of the non-zoning items. The protest rights, I had thought that that would come up in the process section that we had identified, you had asked about housing capacity on corridors, being a topic area that we could discuss, I thought that would be, one, there's a special presentation on that today, but also in the category having to do with the residential zoning and mapping section that was identified as a subject area. You had pres- preservation incentives, and I thought that that would come up, along with the historical preservation bonuses in the affordable housing, in the bonus section, the density bonus section, so it was the intent not to leave those out, but, but to have categories that were broad enough, but to your point, you couldn't have known that from what was listed, because we didn't list everything that could be covered under it, but that's the intent in those areas, but if you think that it belongs, any one of these topics belongs in a different area, you can raise it in any one of the areas that you or anyone thinks has remained anything that they want to raise.
I think at this point, my chief concern, and thank you for acknowledging that we wouldn't have known what the intent was without it either being written in the message board post, or specifically stated, especially since a number of items had been articulated and set out there individually, and you had asked us on more than one occasion to give you additions to the list, which is what Ann and I had attempted to do, and had highlighted that on a number of occasions. I think my chief concern at this point is the abundance of topics that we need to go through, and whether we will actually have the opportunity to have sufficient conversation about them, so to that end, and especially since one of the top, one of the top topics for the public is the protest rights, I think it would be useful for us to ensure that that is taken up today, this afternoon, which was what my original request was back in the last work session, and I think you had indicated at that point that we would accommodate that.
Okay, would you say that again, what was the last thing?
That I had requested that we talk about protest rights, actually the list of six, on the third, with time on the fourth for any items that we didn't get to, but specifically on protest rights, that is of chief concern to a lot of people in our city, as we know, and there are varying levels of understanding of protest rights, and we have not officially talked about that as a dais in public, we do have some assertions from staff that have been made publicly as the official position of the city, but the council has not talked about our official position.
Okay, I'll make sure that that.
My desire is, is that specifically, we must have that conversation officially and publicly, and I would request that it happened today.
We'll go through each of those areas, and absolutely raise protest rights as part of the conversation, we have the process element, and you could certainly bring it up in there, and if you could be prepared to speak to it too, but certainly discussion on the dais, absolutely bring that up.
So I'll just reiterate, my chief concern about that is the number of topics that we have, the fact that we have talked about some of them already, some of them we haven't talked about at all, and the protest rights being one, so I would like to give the topics that we haven't yet chatted about some priority, and so that, so we can actually get to that and raise the concerns that again, a big number of people in the community are asking us about.
Absolutely, and when we get to that part of the conversation, it's a completely open mic within those areas, so you or anyone else on the dais can say, this is what I want us to be talking about in this area.
And will we have an opportunity to have an exchange of ideas, I mean, it's one thing to raise it, which, you know, I already have, but I wanted to have a conversation about it.
Yes.
Is there room in the process for that?
There's absolutely no limit on the things that people can talk about, if they want to talk about it.
Okay.
Today, tomorrow, as well as, as well as next week as well.
Okay, I think I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
All right.